I see that we are at 5:00 PM, this according to my computer. See, we have. We don't have that many people yet. I don't see any planning commissioners besides me. What's going on?
Hopefully, folks will be kind of... Ah, there we go.
I see, I see one. This is good. Hello.
Hello.
You have the floor. Say anything you want.
Carefully.
No comment.
Well done on being first. Thank you very, very much. Much appreciated.
Oh, you're welcome.
I guess, Missy, we don't need quorum to start talking, do we?
I guess it depends on what you're talking about.
That's fair.
The weather, not so much.
Fair. I see. So for commissioned business, we must wait for a quorum.
Well, then you would end up repeating it.
Also true. Yeah, fair point, fair point.
Looks like we have lots of people coming, so that's a good idea.
I got a Judy, I got a Rory. It's all coming together. Welcome, welcome. Got it. Jose, fantastic. I see Liz. I think we have enough to start a conversation here. That being the case, Zero Nassau Street, any questions on that?
I have a question on that. So the application materials kind of kind of intermittently talk about like, and like, the potential duplexes that could be built by right in the site being built, or like underway, or there are building permits. I went over there and there was like a bobcat and the place next door are under construction. What is the status of that site now? Are they like approved by red building permits?
Trying to turn my camera on, Roy. No, there's not. The, the I think the applicant was trying to explain what could be built currently by right. There was, at one point in the past, those existing duplexes that they're just finished up to the north could have continued further down. And I think they were just trying to explain that could be what could be done now. But no, there's nothing, nothing going on right now.
Gotcha.
Matthew, I have a question about the designation on the county map on the GIS about the floodplain, the 1% exceedance, kind of like what that designation means and how, how staff interprets it.
So we have Tony, Tony Edward is our floodplain administrator. And so basically, you have a floodway, the 2% floodplain, or excuse me, the 1% floodplain, and then the 0.2% floodplain. And you cannot build in a floodway. You can build in the two floodplains if you meet certain criteria, and that's typically handled by Tony. It, the, my understanding, and not as an engineer, my understanding is the criteria to meet is fairly low. If you can bring up your building, even through bringing dirt in above a certain height, you then can get, be permitted to build there. We've seen that all along Nassau, just because of it is being in, excuse me, isn't that 1% floodplain?
Okay, thanks.
Anything more on Nassau?
Um, I did have another question when I was looking on GIS. Obvious, I mean, the, the neighboring properties were built under a community land trust, not the directly adjacent, but there's like maybe two duplexes at 812 through 820. But are those, what is the status of ownership of those? It doesn't, it doesn't say that they're owned by a community land trust still, but I'm just not really sure with that, how that's working.
For the ones to the north of the subject property?
They're to the north.
I think, I think that's still being all worked out, because I believe there was three. Terry Rainey was the planner during, over those. In my understanding, there was kind of three partners involved at one point, and I think that's just been working through his process, through how that ownership is going to shake out.
Okay.
All right, Nassau, let's go. All right, let's move on to
I have one more question, and this is a stupid one, and I'm sorry, but is the idea that these three lots get combined? Like, how does?
Yes, they would have to, prior to getting site plan approval, the three lots and the one lot, the portion of lot is a weird lot. If, if you pull up the portion of lot in GIS, it is the lot, part of the subject property, an L-shaped lot to the south, and then another lot to the north. It's all one, quote unquote, one lot. But yes, there would have to be, there'd have to be a boundary line adjustment to, to create one lot for the two apartments prior to signing and approving a site plan. It would not affect the rezoning.
I got you.
Right.
Um, so this is all the, kind of a dumb question maybe, but on page 14 of the packet, or page 10 of 13 of the staff report, where it lays out the use matrix, it doesn't have a use available under, for example, residential occupancy, three or four unrelated persons, residential density, one to 21 DUA. I'm assuming that, you know, even though they didn't explicitly say that they're proffers, that, you know, they can build the five flexes, and those five flexes would be allowed to be occupied. And is it?
Well, in the R3, you kind of lose your except, you know, you're not going to be able to do accessory dwelling unit. I'm not sure if I'm, I mean, if I'm
Yeah, I'm not talking about EDUs. I'm talking about, so, well, there's the two line items for residential occupancy, three unrelated persons, four unrelated persons, which I think just applies to any dwelling unit typically. And then there's like density, one to 21 units per acre, which is, I think, what we're looking at here. And I mean, I, I think it's kind of implied, given that they're, what they're proposing, but
So they need, they're going to need to check one of those boxes, because basically, this is sort of creating a special zoning district, and so if, under our, at least our current ordinance, if you are not specifically permitted, you're prohibited. So they're going to have to pick one or the other. Um, and so they should, they should tell you which one they're, they're going to choose. And that's the number of persons who are allowed to occupy each dwelling unit.
Great. So it's safe to assume maybe then that that'll be worked out in the final proffer statement for council, or should we, is it worth talking about with the applicant today?
Um, it, it, you should probably confirm with the applicant, so you're correct, that typically, the, the residential occupancy for three is, is a more restrictive vision, and we don't use it very many places, so um, if the applicant should tell you specifically whether it's their intention to limit it to three. Otherwise, most places in the city, it's a standard four. And, but if they're going to list it in their use matrix, they shouldn't list anything that doesn't have a purpose in this zoning district, because if you list something and then leave it undesignated, that means it's not permitted, which means under our ordinance, it's prohibited.
Well, so I guess, I mean, the use matrix is in the staff report, right? Like, their, their proffer was just words, I guess. I'm trying to find this proper statement, but
Yeah, so you should have them clarify either now or later on at the meeting. That's, that, that's my point.
Okay.
If they're going to address uses in the proffers, they really need to be precise, because if they are not specific, they may not be able to do something later that a, that a property owner might want to do.
That's cool. I see you're on here. Do you want to address that?
Yeah, um, I specifically didn't put the unrelated persons four or three, because I didn't want a restriction on unrelated persons in the proffer statement. So I specifically didn't put that in there. So the way I read it, and Lisa Robinson, if, if I'm wrong, let me know, but the way I read it is, the way I stated in the proffer statement is, these amount, these uses are allowed by right, and I state, single family, multifamily, single family attached, and I don't state anything about a restriction related to unrelated persons, and so you know, I have to look at the city zoning ordinance. There may be something in there that says there's a restriction on unrelated persons elsewhere. But I'm saying, I'm thinking if I don't have that in the proffer statement, that there isn't a restriction on unrelated persons. And that was my thought process and not including it in the proffer statement.
So I'll, I'll go look it up. I think the point is well taken, that the, the quote, "matrix" is in the staff report, but you know, if the purpose of the proffers is to identify the permitted uses, we, we do need to figure out what the intention is. I think it would not be a good result. So let, let me take a quick look at the, the general zoning ordinance provisions while you all move on. But I, I do think as a general rule, if one of the existing use matrices in the zoning ordinance doesn't say otherwise, the rule is for unrelated persons. But we want to make sure that we are not accidentally saying to you that someone could have six, eight, 10 unrelated persons by not addressing it. So it's, it's now kind of a matter that needs to get cleared up. But let me, let me go look at the zoning ordinance, and I'll, I'll come back to you guys with information about what, whether we have a default situation in the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Additional questions on Nassau? I have lost myself, but questions on the next one?
That Coleman?
Was there any interest in, so I'm making a motion to put it on the consent agenda? Mr. Mitchell, looking at you.
I would be happy to put that on the consent agenda, if in fact, by doing that, it embraces the three recommendations on page six about the city engineer.
Thank you very much.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any other questions on Coleman before we move on?
We can't, we can't do that formally yet. We'll do that once we get to the agenda.
And I just wanted
The formal that we can't do that quite yet.
I just want to follow up my email and understand kind of why this couldn't have been six homes with three duplexes, you know, obviously, given that it would have required a critical slopes waiver. So you mentioned that it, like, would have required laying out six lots, but wasn't it six lots prior to the boundary line adjustment that happened? Or were those not in a configuration that would have made sense for duplexes?
It, it wasn't in a configuration that could be built without having to build a road. So complication upon complication kept adding, adding on to it, and so the, the applicant ended up with the proposal that they have at this point. After weighing all of the circumstances, this is a, an incredibly difficult place to build anything on.
Okay, thanks.
Coleman, last call.
Um, I, so I want to be sure, we still haven't received any public comment on Coleman?
None that I'm aware of. Mr. O'Connell, have you heard any?
I did hear from one lady. I think she had some comment on the frontage, or that on Coleman Court for the two lots. But I haven't heard anything from her. I directed her to speak at the meeting, so.
Well, then that may be a reason why we should not put it on the consent agenda.
Uh, we do have public comment before we vote in the consent agenda, right? Which would be the only public comment for, for critical slope waiver anyway.
So from a procedural standpoint, um, you all could vote to put it on the consent agenda. You would then hear matters from the public. If you were concerned about anything following matters from the public, you could remove it again. And then we'd be back where we currently are.
Good. So in announcing the matters from the public, we could just ask whoever does that to mention this particular application and have them say something at that point. So that we can take it off the agenda, the consent agenda.
And I have a couple of quick ones. So is the lot configuration that's there now going to be the final lot configuration? So like, the northern side of the duplex would have all of that hill in its lot, and then the other one would be smaller? Is that plan?
That is where they landed, yes.
Okay. And then I didn't see, like, a yard sign zoning notice when I was out there. I know it's not a strict requirement.
It's a critical slopes waiver. There wasn't a zoning, the, the critical slopes waiver doesn't have that same requirement that a discretionary review would.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks. That's all.
Good questions. Very good questions.
You have your hand up?
No, so not, not deliberately, not that.
Very good.
How did I do that?
Let's move on from Coleman. 2:40 scribbling, big topic. Who wants to start?
So what? I, Rory mentioned that there was a letter that we had a couple of weeks back, but I don't remember that letter. Is there some sort of draft agreement that I missed that, that is out there on this between the folks in Public Works and, and the developer? Did I miss the agreement?
The only thing I've seen is the draft that was sent to us by Chris Engel, Economic Development Department, in advance of our last meeting.
When we, when we sent this back, we asked them to work with Public Works to put together a more robust agreement. Do we, is there a more robust agreement out there or not?
So I know that Public Works gave a presentation to council about like a, their own kind of better but still very preliminary cost estimate of it, and then Counselor Hill said in that email earlier today that there, that the developers had increased the amount in the agreement to that amount, but I haven't gotten anything else, unless you guys have.
Yeah, your emails were helpful. I read that, I read it a couple of times. So the, the developer has agreed to, to put up the money to provide the necessary infrastructure, or is it, or the, does the city still have to do some work?
So um, let me, let me try to, let me try to sort of get to the, the heart of the matter. This would be a city capital project, so the project would need to be referenced within the capital improvements program. If you look at any capital improvements program, you list the projects that are your priority for the upcoming fiscal year, and then for some period after that, typically five years, and you list your projects that have priority, and then you specify the, the source of funding. It might be borrowing, it might be cash, whatever it is. So the source of funding doesn't really matter. In this instance, whether or not the debt that is incurred comes from a bond or is from the developer, the fact that there would be a repayment obligation in subsequent years creates some amount of debt. Now, um, you know, whether or not that counts against the debt limit depends on a number of factors. But the long and the short of it is, the agreement should counsel decide ultimately to approve it. The agreement would require in future fiscal years that city council use tax revenues they receive in that fiscal year to pay back this debt, and they would be looking at the tax revenues from this particular development. And so, um, you know, there are ways to do it, but ultimately, if you're going to do things correctly and have a city project correctly teed up and referenced as being the basis for this debt that you are setting up, it's got to be in the capital improvements program. And so, um, right now, I do, I do not believe there is consensus among all parties who have influence over what goes in the capital improvements program for the project be listed in that. But that is the, the proposed CIP. It's my understanding that's coming to you later this month.
It seems to me that we're back to where we were when we first looked at the application, because the developer is not looking to do the work. The developer is looking to fund, to help fund the work. And if it, and based on emails I read between, going back and forth between the mayor and the former vice mayor, we're not willing to, to requeue things, to move this thing up in the queue. So.
Right, it's a matter of, of bringing this to the top as a priority in the CIP for the upcoming year, and, or, you know, I, I'm not sure. I, I think the arrangements would call for the the development to commence during the upcoming fiscal year. I don't know whether the, the first payment would become due until a subsequent fiscal year. But at any rate, um, the proposal would be for the sidewalk project to occur relatively simultaneously with the development itself, which is a fairly substantial undertaking to plan, to design, to acquire right of way. It's a, it's a big project. And if we're going to get started, that would need to happen relatively soon. But in an ideal world, something like this would go in the capital improvements project, uh, capital improvements program for consideration. It, that proceeds to city council for review, along with the other budget items for the year. And then the, the zoning matter could catch up with it later. But we, we are right now, it's my understanding that it's not in the capital improvements program. There's not a consensus for it to be listed as one of the priority city projects for the next two or three fiscal years. And so I don't really know, sort of, you know, that, that's where it is.
Yeah, the, the matter of it is, we're pretty much back where we were a couple of weeks ago. We talked about this. We don't know, we don't want, and again, this is probably deliberations that we'll have to have later, but we don't want to get ahead of this, if in fact, the infrastructure is not going to be there when
Yeah. So I think that, much like always, you have options, you, on this type of matter, you're making a recommendation. So you're not actually making a final decision. So your recommendations can be made based on, you know, factors that present themselves. So if, for example, you could recommend denial, unless the city undertakes a sidewalk project, you could, you could recommend approval subject to the city undertaking a sidewalk project. So there, you know, there's really not a need for you to, you know, postpone a decision at your level, as long as you make your recommendation and the basis for your recommendation very clear.
That is, that is very helpful. Hey, thank you. That helps. We, we can recommend approval if, and only if the city moves the capital improvements for this project up in the queue. We have the ability to do that. Okay.
Right.
So, yeah, that is actually helpful in terms of just making our decision tonight contingent. But in the interest of thinking a little bit forward, since we'll be, you know, considering the CIP soon, do we have a sense of what council's hangups are about including it? So, you know, I, I had thought that the worry was that we don't want to fund this project necessarily ahead of other projects. But if it's merely about, you know, listing it in the capital improvement program, and, you know, the funding is coming in from elsewhere, I'll make an assumption that it doesn't count against our debt limit. Otherwise, the funding doesn't seem very useful. Then, you know, what is their hangup at that point? Is it, is it prioritization of staff time? Is it just? I, I don't understand.
I, I can't speak to that, because I, I've not, I did not, there were some, there were some emails on the topic today, but I, I must admit, I did have a lot of opportunity to delve into those in detail. But what I will tell you is that it's both a legal and a budgetary issue. If, if you've been watching the sort of things the last few months, there's a, there's a lot of tendency. People are now starting to ask for things to be funded over multiple fiscal years, and they say, oh, you can just earmark this revenue for that. And so, um, that's fine, but what council is actually doing, if, if they accept this arrangement, is they're saying that, you know, if not next fiscal year, two fiscal years from now, if we would otherwise have had additional tax revenue to use for affordable housing, or to help pay, you know, the debt service on a school project, we will have, you know, this much less of that revenue, because we've agreed that we're going to devote that revenue to paying for this sidewalk. So no matter how you look at it, even though it seems like somebody's giving you money to do it early, what you're doing is kicking the can down the road, and you're kind of taking money away from other priorities to fiscal years from now. So I, I would be surprised if, if that's not part of what is under consideration, but it's, it's, it's a tricky issue, and the question of sort of these, you know, arrangements for incurring debt that are outside of bond agreements. Um, you know, you have to, you have to be careful entering into them, so. I, that's, I, I think at the heart of it, it's, it's probably both the fact that you're saying to other neighborhoods or other people issued interested in having a certain amount of annual funding for affordable housing, the, the fact that you're putting some, even if it's a relatively small amount of money, the fact that you're identifying it as a priority in the CIP over the next two to three fiscal years. It, it may be an appearance, but it is also a, a significant budget and legal issue.
So that, that's helpful, but I guess, so correct me if I'm wrong, maybe, but as I understand the agreement, the main advantage of it is that repayment is entirely based on any the main advantage of it is that repayment is entirely based on any incremental tax revenue that comes from this project. And so if we don't build the sidewalks and we deny the project, we're foregoing all of that potential future revenue. But if we approve it, they have to give us the money to build the project, uh, to build the sidewalks. And then if they don't build anything, for example, uh, we are not really on the hook to repay them because there isn't any tax increment, except maybe, you know, a little bit for them having the rights to do that. Right? And so.
Yeah. I mean, it's a little more complicated than that, but that's kind of it in a nutshell. The choice is not, you know, most likely, you know, something is going to happen there as, as you all always discuss within any application coming through. Something will happen there. But, um, um, whether or not this is a, is a, an opportunity that is the best thing for the city at this time, um, is really a decision that's ultimately for council to make. But, um, you know, again, we've, you know, the, if, if you're going to embark on a, a multimillion dollar project, particularly if you're going to incur debt for it, it really does need to show up in your capital improvements program as one of your priority projects for those years. And that's, that's where we are right now. And, um, at some point, you know, the counselors can speak individually for themselves because they haven't spoken on it as a group at this point. But, um, you know, it's, it's a complicated situation. It's, it's a very interesting proposal that we don't get very often because it's an opportunity to take something that may or may not even be one of our priority sidewalk projects overall, according to our own records. But to move it up because we, we have an opportunity for somebody to, um, loan us some money on the front end if we earmark the tax revenues from their project on the back end. But it's, um, you know, we're, we're starting to see a lot of those requests. And I think that the trick for the budget and finance people in the city is, is going to be keeping track of sort of, you know, what future revenues are we, um, talking about devoting to particular things? And, and what situation is that going to leave you in, you know, two or three years from now?
Again, I, I, I think your recommendation is, uh, is very helpful that we have the option to approve this. But the approval will be contingent upon us, um, moving, um, getting this into the capital improvement plan and, and moving that up in the, uh, development cycle. That's helpful.
Yeah. And that's a discussion you all will be able to have later in the month. So you, you sort of get a second bite at the apple on that particular.
Speaking of apples, I welcome you all to the Charlottesville Planning Commission regular meeting, where presumably there will be apples. Uh, let us start with commission reports, uh, starting with please, Mr. Mitchell.
Oh, gosh. Okay. Um, let me get my notes. There, um, there've been a couple of meetings that, um, that I haven't had a chance to report out on since we last met. The first is Parks and Rec. Um, once again, we are having staffing challenges. And the staffing challenges are from top to bottom. Um, we are still looking for a leader of that department. And we have a few senior leadership vacancies in, in Parks and Rec. And there are lots of vacancies where the rubber meets the road. So lots of work to be done on just getting people on board. Progress is being made. And, uh, Mr. Sam is, is in the middle of getting, doing interviews and things like that and getting, getting us on board with that. Another interesting piece happening there is, there is an unnamed park. And the unnamed park is on Eighth Street. This is, um, a little park that's just across from the West Haven Community Center. The, we've recommended a name for that park. And the park recommended, the main recommendation we made or provided was a Jenkins Park. And that would be named after Hudson Jenkins. Uh, Mr. Jenkins is an African-American blacksmith that, uh, who owned a livery stable, um, that occupied that area, that space. Uh, the stable burned down in nineteen thirteen. But when it was, uh, active and people had access to it, it was frequented by, um, people of all classes and people of all ethnicities. And it was very prominent, very, very, very popular place to, 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 to store horses and have them shoot and things like that. So that recommendation is being forwarded to council. We've also been working on the capital improvement budget. We've got about nine things that we'd like to do. I understand that, uh, we're not going to be able to do all of them because of the school reconfiguration pieces come driving out of the budget. But there are four things that we think are pretty key. And again, I talked to you guys about this, um, last month, is McIntyre Park because of the drainage issues. We've got to fix that because we're out of compliance with all kinds of state regs. We'd like to do the master plan because we'd like to know who we're going to be when we grow up. And that, that's important to get done. That's the second priority. The other priority is completion of the Medicare, Medicare trails, the trails that Joey and I walked, um, about three or four weeks ago. We've got VDOT money, uh, in that that's helping us do that. And we just need to add to the VDOT money. I think we've got somewhere around seven hundred thousand, maybe seven fifty thousand dollars from VDOT. And we just need to add, um, a number close to that to complete that. And then, uh, the other, the fourth thing of the nine priorities that I'm keen about is, um, uh, Key Rec, the roof is leaking. We need to fix the roof so that, you know, I'm not slipping and falling and I'm trying to drive to the hoop. So that's, that, that's pretty important. The other group that, um, met was LUPAC. Remember, LUPAC is, um, a land use and environmental planning consortium, um, including the city, the county, UVA and the Water and Sewer, uh, Sewer Organization, uh, Ravanna Water and Sewer Authority. That meeting focused, uh, in its entirety on energy and sustainability. And we had a presentation, presentation from, uh, UVA's consultant that's helping them, um, develop strategies to, um, embrace, uh, move toward, uh, strategies for thermal, uh, in, uh, thermal energy. UVA would like to be carbon neutral by twenty thirty. That's, that's so hard to do because you can buy your way into being carbon neutral. But they'd also like to be fossil free by twenty fifty. That ain't so easy. So the consultant is helping, uh, UVA look at, uh, existing, but also emerging, uh, technologies and strategies to get them to, uh, being a, being fossil free by, by, by twenty fifty. There was a recent presentation by, uh, Albemarle relating to its large scale, um, solar panels. To do solar panels in Albemarle, you need a special use permit. There are two that are either underway or either have been approved. I don't remember exactly whether they're underway or approved, but there are two that, that, that are bubbling up to the planning commission and then to the board of supervisors. One's near Ravanna and one's midway, um, midway, I think Batesville, that, that are on the way. And there's one that they're thinking about that's probably going to be presented to, uh, the planning commission and then to supervisors. One more, uh, for, in HGP as well to get a third, um, uh, farm, solar, solar farm there. So that's coming along. We have partnered, I think with the city and the county, they have partnered on a, um, a, a glass house emission study. But the presentation, well, the city and county have partnered on this. The, the, the presentation was done by the, by the county. So I'm going to kind of walk you guys through what the county presented. It is our objective, we got the city and county's objective, to reduce by forty-five percent, um, the emissions that were happening in two thousand eight. So forty-five percent, we want to reduce those emissions that were happening in two thousand eight by two thousand thirty. So two thousand thirty, emissions of two thousand eight have been reduced by forty-five percent. Between two thousand eight and two thousand eighteen, we're already down by, by ten percent. So progress is being made. Um, interesting, just thing to note, the county's sequestration of carbon is incredibly, uh, significant. And the, the guy who was doing the presentation actually walked us through what the number was and all these NADA things and things that went way beyond my, my head. It, it, it is, I'm seeing what they meant, but I could tell by the wows in the room, that what the county's been able to do, their sequestration rate has been significant. It's because of their canopy, um, the forestry. So when Mr. Lahendra is beating us up about, um, preserving and increasing their canopy, keep in mind that, that canopy that he's suggesting that we need to protect in, in Bro is taking carbon out of the, uh, out of the, uh, out of the atmosphere. And one last thing, there was a presentation by the Water and Sewer Agency, Ravanna Water and Sewer Agency. And that was, that spoke about, um, the treatment of wastewater. And I didn't know, and maybe you guys did, but I didn't know how much, um, methane gas, um, happens when you take the waste out of the water and when you put the clean water back into the, uh, in, into the, to Ravanna. But it's, it's, it's tremendous. If you're driving from Richmond to Charlottesville, in between exhibit one twenty-four and one twenty-one, just as you cross the Ravanna River, you look to your right, you'll see this spherical structure. Has anyone ever wondered what this spherical structure is? I have. It is the, um, the methane storage facility. That's when they take, when they take the gas that's created by cleaning the water out and, and store it. It, it goes into debt. And I think they just have, have a way of burning, burning it off. It was built in nineteen eighty, so it's aging. And so we're going to have to renovate that. And it's going to cost us about three million bucks to do that. That's my update from my last couple of minutes.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Dowell, uh, what can you tell us?
Good evening, everyone. Um, I did attend the October twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth school CIP committee meeting. And so, um, we did have five priorities. And then we also discussed the school project, um, projects that have been completed or that are underway. One of the biggest things was the COVID mitigation equipment that has been installed in all of our schools. Um, the Performance Arts Center chiller has been replaced. And then our classroom, um, havoc equipment has also been replaced. Venable and K-Tech are also underway to get upgrades. And we are anticipating in twenty twenty-two that the building automation upgrades will be done to Clark. And then, um, also with the Walker rooftop, um, air units, numbers one through seven will also be upgraded. Some of the things that have been completed are the CHS parking lot signage is new. The Venable annex has had to be repaired and also, um, fixed to be maintained. They have a small safety issue, um, with the building foundation. So they have secured that and then moved staff out so they are safe. But that is one of the projects that is coming up. The Lugo McGinnis siding has been replaced. And then, um, Burley Moran has underwent their moderate, modernization of the school as well. Um, one of our other big items was the Buford Walker, um, reconstruction or reconfiguration. Construction is anticipated to start summer of twenty twenty-three with Buford getting the most renovations, um, major renovations, major renovations in the gym and of the existing buildings. Walker will have minimal upgrades, but that's anticipated to be done to prepare for pre-K and phase two of the project.
Thank you. Ms. Russell. Mr. Mitchell?
Um, question for Ms. Dowell. And it, it may be too much in the weeds, and if it is, we can talk offline. Um, you, you mentioned K-Tech and some upgrades of K-Tech. Is the roof included in that? Do you know, or is it too much in the weeds?
I do believe so, but I can double check and get back to you on that.
Okay. I'll, I'll talk to you offline. I'm on the K-Tech board, so they've been beating it up.
Well, yes, I'll definitely double check the minutes and let you know.
Okay.
Mr. Robb, please.
I have not been in any meeting since we last met. But, um, the Thomas Jefferson Planning Commission, uh, created the Ravanna River Bicycle Pedestrian Crossing Advisory Committee to help the Charlottesville Albemarle MPO develop a concept for the, the bridge that's going to happen between Pantops and the Weldon Mills area. And they wanted a planning commission member to be part of that committee. And I've been appointed to be on that commission. So, um, I'll let you know when, after we first meet, we're planning on meeting sometime in the next couple of weeks as our first meeting. And meetings probably run until sometime around April of next year.
Thank you. Mr. Lahendra?
I attended two committee meetings since the last time we met, um, in, well, whenever that was. The B, the Board of Architectural Review, we've met a lot lately. The Board of Architectural Review, um, they met, uh, October nineteenth. We had three certificates of appropriateness approved. And one of those, uh, of, of significance, uh, is for a small apartment building to go behind Preston Court on, uh, which is on Grady Avenue. Uh, the apartment building is on the, um, a circular, uh, street behind, uh, Preston Court. We had one deferral and then three preliminary discussions for small residential projects. The Tree Commission met just last week, uh, the, the second of November. And, uh, we had a, a great report from the Education and Advocacy Committee. They're making presentations to the city elementary schools on the health benefits of trees. And they're also working with the city schools, uh, to develop a curriculum study on trees. We, uh, have been coordinating with the, uh, Parks and Rec to develop a final list of a hundred and sixty-seven trees that were going to be planted, that the city is going to plant, uh, this winter. That's less than the goal of two hundred trees a year to be planted, which, and that goal is, is determined by just keeping a, uh, keeping level with the current canopy. So we are behind that. And, uh, as we also discussed, the CIP, uh, coming up. And we are going to make recommendations, uh, requests for, uh, budgets for both, uh, Emerald Ash Bore treatments and for planting new trees. Uh, in the last few years, the city has combined those, thinking that they were equivalent. They're not equivalent. Um, we need to save the ash trees. If we don't, um, they're going to become hazards and it's going to end up costing more money to take them out. And we need to be planting more trees to, um, as Mr. Mitchell, uh, pointed out, it's essential for, um, for many reasons. The health of our residents as well as the, um, the environment and the earth. Um, and then lastly, uh, a footnote to Mr. Mitchell's report. We are losing our own urban forester with Parks and Rec. Uh, Mike Ronain, um, has resigned. And, um, uh, he has been our liaison, uh, with the Tree Commission and between the Tree Commission and the Parks and Rec. So that's a sad loss. Um, and, um, we hope to have them replaced, uh, sometime soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Russell?
I have no reports. Thank you.
And Mr. Solzenberg?
Uh, thanks. Yeah. I've only had, uh, one meeting since we met last. Uh, it was of TJPDC. Uh, the main event at that meeting, uh, was a presentation of our annual audit. It was very exciting, uh, but I'll spare you all the details. Uh, it was a clean bill of health. The, uh, maybe interesting thing for you guys, um, is that, uh, there is, or the, uh, the regional transit vision study has kicked off. Um, and so, uh, the consultants on that team are now seeking input, uh, for what, uh, you and the community and everybody, uh, would like to see out of our transit system, um, in the future. So if you would like to see, uh, more frequent, reliable, uh, transit in new places, uh, go, uh, to their website, which I will paste to the chat, um, and go fill out the study or the, there's a survey. There is a, a map survey. Um, then there's kind of an open comment form. Also, there's an upcoming meeting on, I think, November eighteenth, uh, that will. Uh, also, there's an upcoming meeting, and I think November eighteenth, uh, that will uh, kind of discuss that. Um, there's also separately from the vision study, a uh, an Albemarle Transit Expansion Study uh, that will look at how to provide transit, uh, whether fixed route or microtransit to uh, twenty-nine North by the airport, uh, to Monticello and possibly one other location in Albemarle. Um, that, so those are the uh, key events from TJPDC. Um, thanks.
How can people who are not uh, on the Zoom uh, find this website?
Uh, that is a good question. Um, the URL is not easy to find. Um, I think probably if you Googled regional transit vision for the Charlottesville area, it would come up.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Palmer from the university, can you please enlighten us? Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, sorry, I was getting off mute. I um, I had an email with that, with that link in it that um, Rory was just mentioning, so I was going to try to throw it in the chat, but uh, I can get to that after my report. Um, I don't have a whole lot. I just wanted to talk a little bit about Emmett Street. Um, as you know, it's kind of closed down right now near the intersection with Ivy, uh, because we're doing a bunch of stormwater enabling work in the road to uh, help with our um, plan, plan, you know, development of every Emmett Ivy site. And what we're doing is putting in a a big box culver to replace three smaller pipes that conveyed stormwater under the road. And that is progressing well, and it should be done, supposed to be done November twelfth. Hopefully will be done uh, a day early, so that's helpful for people that are annoyed by being rerouted. Um, along with that, it's not just the stormwater pipes, which will, you know, help us, but it also helps Emmett Street because periodically when it rained really hard, that that road would flood. Uh, this should, I can't guarantee it'll, it'll uh, reduce all flooding, but it should help with with that. And I I doubt it'll happen as frequently, if at all, in the future. Also took the opportunity to coordinate with RWSA on a big water line uh, in in that vicinity to kind of put a little bit of, uh, to kind of help them upgrade their line there. Uh, and we had to move the gas line. So that all will get put back together, as I said, on November eleventh. And then uh, the three projects, building projects that we have on Emmett Street going from south up towards Ivy Emmett, our Contimular Sciences is underway near the um, near the education school, uh, and Adele. And the School of Data Science has officially broke ground, but it's not a whole lot, you know, really happening there at Ivy Corridor, other than the site, you know, getting site ready for that. And then in January, we should break ground on the Hotel Conference Center, which is kind of against the uh, parking garage that's there. So it's a little setback from the road uh, and further up towards Ivy Road. Um, that's about it for now. So, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, I have nothing to report, other than uh, very much looking forward to City Council discussing the comprehensive plan on the fifteenth. High hopes on that topic. Uh, Ms. Creasy, can you share what's going on with the city?
Sure. Um, just a reminder, we have our uh, first work session that we've had in a little while. We have a work session scheduled for November twenty-third, so that's our fourth Tuesday, um, which you all have as a, as a pencil. Um, we're just going to have one for real. Um, confirming that time is going to be at five o'clock. Um, that's what's on the budget schedule, and this is specific to the CIP. So um, Ms. Hamel from our uh, Budget Office will be providing some background on the CIP, and then it will be an opportunity for discussion. So um, and that's in preparation for December, when that will come forward to you all for recommendation. Um, and then that moves on to council when they're working through their budget session. So um, that's kind of one of those normal back-on-track uh, scheduling things that uh, we haven't had in a while. So um, and also we we have a few new members, and so there is going to be the opportunity to have a little bit more um, one-on-one um, on CIP to to assist in that. I see Mr. Mitchell has a question.
Oh, yeah, I um, I I represent the Planning Commission on the CIP panel, and I haven't seen invite yet. Um, do you guys know when? I'd like to have a preview of what's going to be presented to to the Planning Commission, so I can either endorse it or 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 not. Um, do you know when um, staff is meeting or when staff is engaging, pre- pre-engaging the Planning Commission for this?
Um, let me, uh, I'll pull back the schedule again. I hit it up and then I put it down um, for how that's moving forward.
Last couple of years, until last year, got better last year, a couple of years before that, we got caught off guard. We weren't not invited until we presented to to the Planning Commission. And last year, we were invited. We had some inputs, and I just didn't want to get caught off guard.
Um, so I pulled up the budget meeting calendar, which is available on the city website, just in case anyone wants to take a look at that. I don't see anything specific to internal meetings. Um, so I will uh, ask Ms. Hamel um, for some information on what that will be.
I mean, just to give a little value, just to, at least so I can advise my colleagues, what I've heard related to that.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
All right. And then um, we we do have a robust December agenda um, coming up. Uh, so definitely um, just keep an eye out for materials. We'll have, we'll have that. The the hearing on the CIP will will be somewhat familiar, because you will have discussed it in November. Um, but uh, we anticipate the a couple of PUDs, uh, the one for MACA and Park Street Christian Church. Um, and so um, that could be a pretty fruitful discussion. So just kind of keep that in mind as a preview.
Thank you very much. Moving to public comment, uh, these are uh, comments uh, from the public on items not on the formal agenda. So this would include items like uh, um, I'm going to get it together. Items like Coleman Street and two forty Stribling. Uh, basically anything except for Zero Nassau Street. Uh, now is your time. I think, uh, Mr. Trail?
Mr. Trail is.
Yes, um, if, yeah. Speak to the Planning Commission at this time, please uh, click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. If you're joining us via telephone, press star nine. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Please uh, say your place of residence when you begin.
And please be sure to unmute.
Yes. All right, Chair, at this time, I see no hands raised.
Just a moment. Uh, this is your chance, if you wish to speak. All right, seeing none, I close the public comment. Uh, I believe we are moving to the consent agenda. Mr. Mitchell, do you have thoughts on this topic?
Uh, yeah, here I would like to move that we proved the consent, the consent agenda as advertised, but I would also like to add uh, the Coleman application to this. Um, in doing so, I would like to be be certain that the recommendations made by the city engineer here on page six of the uh, of the staff report be uh, included in the report.
Second.
Uh, Ms. Creasy, can you uh, call the roll?
Sure, I'm going to call on my screen order here. Um, sorry about that. Uh, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Lahendra?
Aye.
Ms. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Solenberg?
Aye.
Ms. Dow?
Aye.
And Mr. Soli Yates?
Aye. I believe that passes unanimously. Moving along. Moving along, um, I believe we are at our joint meeting. Uh, Council, are you in order?
They appear to be so.
Outstanding. Suppose we're one minute early.
We, there are three of us present, therefore we do have a forum, so a quorum.
Excellent. Well, I think we can proceed. Uh, reading the uh, staff report on Zero Nassau Street. We have Mr. Offley. Uh, Mr. Offley, are you, are you prepared?
Yes, I am noticing my camera might be funny, so if I keep freezing, um, just, it's freezing on my end, but I don't know if y'all are freezing on y'alls end. But uh, all right, so uh, Commissioners, tonight you will hold a public hearing for requested rezoning of Zero Nassau Street. The proposed rezoning covers tax map parcel six one zero zero seven nine six zero zero and six one zero zero seven nine seven zero zero and a portion of six one zero zero seven nine zero zero. And is located on the eastern side of Nassau Street, the intersection of Florence Road. Justin Schimpf with Schimpf Engineering and Nicole Scro, representing the owner Franklin Street Land Trust uh, three, has submitted a rezoning application pursuant to City Code Section thirty-four forty-one, seeking to read a zoning map amendment to change the zoning district classification for Zero Nassau Street. The application proposes to change the classification from the existing R-two residential two-family to R-three residential multifamily with proffers and a development plan. The comprehensive land use map for this area of the city calls for low-density residential. Key aspects of the development and plan include two five-unit multifamily buildings, three one-bedroom and two two-bedroom units in each building, not more than ten total units on the subject property, a central parking area between the two buildings, an outdoor recreation area behind the southernmost building, a greenhouse behind the recreation area, new sidewalks in the south side of Nassau Street. The proffers include um, design elements that the design height, density, and other um, substantive characteristics of the project shall remain essentially the same in all material aspects as described within the applicant, application materials submitted to the city on July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, including but not limited to the conceptual site plan dated July tenth, two thousand twenty-one. Height of the building and structure, any building and structure located on the property shall not exceed thirty-five feet in height and uses, the permitted uses in the subject property will be um, as follows, residential and related uses by by right, single-family, detached, single-family, attached, townhome, two-family, accessory buildings, structures and uses, multifamily dwellings, residential treatment facility, one to eight residential uses, and uh, home occupation with a provision use permit. Other uses by right would be utility line um, and utility facilities with a special use permit. During the applicant's presentation, they might touch on a conversation we had in the pre-meeting about adding in some, a weird part of our code that got kind of overlooked as far as our density, even though multifamily was allowed in um, as a, as a use, we also outlined density as a use, so there, I I don't think, I think the applicant might be amending their proper statement to add one to twenty-five DUAs by right, which I don't think would be, would be in line with the presentation materials. Uh, I think it was just something they they need to fix before finalizing the proper. Um, this concludes uh, my report. Staff is available to answer questions, and the applicant has prepared a presentation.
Uh, Mr. Mitchell?
Um, I, I've, I've got a question, but I'd rather defer to Ms. Russell if she's going to ask a follow-up question to her meeting in the pre-meeting. Um, she seems to understand a little better than I do and seems to be a little more eloquent as to the question of floodplain stuff. Ms. Russell, you can ask about that if you are pleased. I'd rather defer to you.
Well, I'm happy to ask, um, for the sake of a, a public meeting, um, I was uh, asking staff about the um, classification of this site as in the uh, one percent exceedance floodplain per um, county, I mean, city GIS. Um, and and wanted to better understand what that meant and how the building engineers um, review site plans um, and building permits with that layer.
Definitely, I'll give kind of the, what I said in the pre-meeting, and then any follow-up questions we might have to defer to. I believe we might have our city engineer on this call too, but the, there are three. Uh, there is a floodway, the one percent um, floodplain, and the point-two percent floodplain. You are not allowed to build in the floodway, but you can build in the floodplain, provided you go through a process to receive a permit. Uh, with that, I don't want to overstep my understanding of it, so it, I don't believe our floodplain administrators on this call. Uh, but we might have someone in Public Works that could add more to that information, but that is my understanding of the process.
A deeper understanding of that would be key to our ability to approve this. Um, if there is no one from the city on online that can talk to it, maybe we can defer to the applicant to talk to Ms. Russell, be brief, give the applicant to speak to it.
That'd be fine.
Mr. Offley, we've received some emails today uh, from the public about this project. Could you summarize what what those emails were saying so that people can can be aware?
Certainly. So during this process, we, I will say we've had limited, um, I've had limited interaction from the public reaching out to me. We, the applicant held their required community meeting. Uh, we did not have any uh, one from the public attend that meeting, but today we did receive quite a few emails from the public. Um, they mainly speak to the um, low-density characteristic of this neighborhood, which is correct, that the, this is part of the conference of plan calls for low-density uh, use. Um, the other main points have been concern about traffic on Nassau Street. Um, and the applicant basically putting, trying to to get the most density out of the site, and that the site might not be appropriate for such a dense development.
Thank you. Uh, additional questions for staff? I believe we already hear from the applicant.
So I'm sorry, is this, um, Matt, is this something where I can put up the PowerPoint, or is this?
We should have, your PowerPoint was sent today, I believe. Do we have that loaded up for the applicant? And if it's not, I can.
Can also share my screen and?
Um, yeah, I just made you a co-host, so you should be able to share your screen now.
Awesome.
Thank you.
I know there's been some power outages or something, so, okay. Okay, so bear with me as I get this up. Okay, can everyone see my screen now? Does that work?
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, okay, so I'm Nicole Scro, um, the applicant uh, before you today. Um, it's me and Justin Schimpf, um, who you've all seen many a times. He's not available today. Um, he is in Nelson County uh, for another public hearing on um, more um, apartments out there. Um, so just a little bit of background, I, because I know that um, myself, but mostly Justin, um, comes before the Planning Commission a few times, or many times, um, representing applicants. In this instance, um, both him um, as the majority stakeholder and me as a minority, um, we're the actual owners of the property. Um, so just for the sake of transparency. Okay, so the property is located, um, I think this is kind of stated, um, along Nassau Street. Um, and I've got a few of your questions from the pre-meeting jotted down. So, um, this is kind of a larger zoom out of the property, so if you go down Monticello Road, you can get to it through um, off of Route twenty, um, turning to get to, into. turning to get into the BB or Moose's Restaurant, or you can go down Carlton. At any rate, it's at the furthest side of the Carlton side, the Belmont Carlton neighborhood. And it's the property in between the Habitat units. So this isn't a great picture because it doesn't show you all of the new development that has happened. Can people see my mouse? Yes. Okay, so on this side is where Habitat and the Thomas Jefferson Community Land Trust, so I think they changed their name finally. And this is where they have two duplexes. Both of them have two duplexes each, that's four. Liz, you'll see in the land records or in the GIS that there's a new owner, that's just the owner that has taken on the long term leases. So it's still in the land trust name and fee simple, but there's a lease to the occupant. So that's why that's different in the GIS. I'm not sure if the GIS was correct in doing that, but at any rate, it's still in the land trust model. So that's on this side of the property. On the opposite side, there's the, I'll zoom in, this probably better time to. Yeah, so this is zoomed in. On this side, Commissioner Soltenberg mentioned there's, and I referenced this probably not as specifically as I could, there's two duplexes being built by Justin currently. They're under construction over here. And those are under construction by right, building permits. The site plan that was approved for this property includes this entire area, including, there's like one parcel here that wasn't included, but includes, so the site plan that was improved includes Habitat, the land trust, the by right duplexes and had envisioned duplexes by right in this site area that I have outlined here. So that site plan is effective and there's a land disturbance permit there. So there's the ability and the legality to disturb that land and it has been disturbed for some fill. So that's why you saw that bobcat there. So there's no building permit, but there's a land disturbance permit. And there's two duplexes being built by right. And a lot of the design, this is just a rezoning zoning map. So this is the R two along this corridor or along the street. And there's a highway in pink over here. And there's, so there's a by right twenty eight unit apartment complex that has been approved in a preliminary site plan. So this probably a better depiction of what I'm trying to talk about. So here's the land trust over here. Habitat, these are under, these are built and occupied. These are the two duplexes Justin's built. There's like gray siding on there now. These are single family that owned individually, and this is that rendering of that twenty eight unit apartment complex. This is a, so this site was designed kind of to mirror what can be done by right, and that's why I kind of mentioned it so much. So this kind of full length driveway can be done by right. So again, the disturbance area was approved, the floodplain fill was approved, has been approved. So the disturbance area, the flil and the floodplain, all of those issues have already been approved. So it's really a matter of whether we can allow that box of building, buildable area to be, have five units in it or two. Right? So the building footprints with some variation, right? So they're, they're, but the question before you is really not a number, amount of disturbance. Not to get too much in the weeds, but so it's not really about the amount of disturbance or buildable area. It's about how many people or how many units can be in that area. That's why I kept mentioning it in my narrative. This is just an aerial site plan. So this is that, so it's R three rich requires some pretty hefty amenities requirements. And so this is our little rec area and we have kind of a greenhouse that, you know, Justin has greenhouse up in his, on his property in Nelson County. Just put a water line in there to the greenhouse. So we're kind of hoping to put that same sort of greenhouse back here. You'll see in blue is where the floodplain is. So not the floodway, but the floodplain. So that's not one percent, that's point two percent. I think Liz mentioned, or Commissioner Russell mentioned, the county being different. The county doesn't allow, in the same way the city doesn't allow disturbance in the floodway, but the county allows disturbance in the floodplain by special use permit. So it, it's allowed by right in the city, but there's still, you know, there's still a permit process and there's still engineers reviewing it. So it's a very similar kind of review oversight, but it's a special use permit in the county and it's by right here for the floodplain. So that's point two percent. Here's Justin's greenhouse. This is in a picture of his. This is just something I found online before his went up. And that's all I've got. So I know there's a lot of issues to cover. Our main kind of thought process here was quickly, was that in building the duplexes, you know, with the cost of construction rising, the rent to sort of cover those costs started to hit around twenty one hundred, which is about market rate for a three bedroom units. These are fairly large units. But the idea was, well, if we were able to kind of have this same or similar footprint, so just four more feet extended off of it, we can fit, you know, five units and we can accommodate more people at lower rents. So this is designed to be a very simple construction to accommodate like the lower end of the market rate rents. And so that's what, that was the whole idea. Instead of continuing to build by right and hitting those higher rents, why don't we allow more people to live here and hit lower rents? So I'm here to answer questions. I know there's kind of a lot of issues at play even with a small little project. So thank you for your time.
And let's do questions. Mr. Mitchell?
I'd like to talk a little bit more about the floodplain piece. I think based on what I've heard from Matt and others, that's not a real issue. Is that your understanding or are you guys planning to do something to mitigate the floodplain issue?
Yeah, so, um, talk more about the floodplain. So here, this is, and this can be confusing. And this came up with the project we had before in that if you look online, the map you see will cover more of the property. And that's because the FEMA doesn't update its maps when there's a map adjustment. It just references it literally. If you look online, it references it, references it in text. Right? And so the floodplain is based on the elevation. So to draw the correct floodplain, you need to look at the text and look up that, that amendment and look up what the elevation is for this area. And so that's this blue line here that runs towards the back of the property. So if there's people that are concerned that more of this property is in the floodplain, that's understandable, but if, if, because it's a little confusing, but it's actually just along this area. You'll see Habitat, if you look towards kind of, they have a driveway going in between their units and then they kind of have a a turnoff off of that driveway, that turnoff area is permeable pavers. And so this isn't shown here, but there actually will be a certain number of permeable pavers that will likely be required for this back area. That's because the site plan was approved under previous regulations, which were actually more stringent that didn't allow you, so that, oh, the disturbance that happens can't be covered by outside nutrient credits. So there has to actually be mitigation on the property, right? And so if we're to adjust a site plan that was previously approved for land that has already been disturbed, we have to we're by, we have to abide by those previous regulations, right? So any disturbance that happens on this property can't be mitigated by nutrient credit that actually has to happen on the property. I'm sorry, that's a long winded, anyway, there will be, these will be permeable pavers back here, even though that's not shown. That's my point.
Ms. Dahl, questions for the applicant?
Originally, I was thinking when I was looking at it how, um, because I did look at Google Maps before she showed the actual like examples of the duplexes that are actually up. So originally I was like, oh, this is not going to be harmonious with the neighborhood, but I am having second thoughts about that, but did want her to touch on that just in case. I know some of our city residents have issues, have concerns about this.
So yeah, for R three, I know it can seem like a step up in density and in scale and en massing. So we have a proffer that limits the height to thirty five feet rather than forty five feet. And the proffer also references the concept plan, which is supposed, so it's supposed to be a very similar building to what was what's up there right now and kind of. So that's why I was, it's really, the building is going to be very similar. And these units, it's just slightly wider. So imagine like a foot off of each. And this has a better massing. So it's just a matter of putting more people in a very similar buildable footprint. I hope that helps.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Robb, questions for applicant?
Yes. I guess just a few comments, questions, sorry, since we're in the question portion. I was wondering about the playground rec and I know you guys are building others duplexes next door. Is that something that's limited to this property or will other people be able to use that space? Just out of curiosity. And have you considered permeable parking surfaces? I'll, I'll start with those two questions.
Yeah, yes, and I, yes, permeable, yes to both. This is owned by Justin slash kind of me. Very small part. So yes, it'll, it'll function as together and it's kind of overparked a bit. So we're hoping that also some of that parking can be utilized as well by the other units. And so we're hoping for it to function together, but I'm just, I had some hesitancy. I don't know, Ms. Robertson, if, if that can't, the amenity requirements restricted to only those residents. That was my hesitation. Honestly, I meant to have that answered before being here. But so that answers the playground area. If it has to be restricted to just that, this, these ten units, there is the Reeves Park across, directly across the street. So that's also great. And so the permeable pavers, yes, I, I think that's great, especially for this floodplain area. Though, and this is not my area of expertise, you know, Justin was stating that sometimes disturbed soil can, you know, doesn't percolate as well. So it's not as helpful as it, as it could be in other areas. But it still has an impact. So, and it's going to be some sort of mitigation, either bio swell or permeable pavers will be required. So one of those two, and we're leaning towards permeable pavers. So, yeah.
Thanks. And another question, we got some, some of the emails touched on this that we got. And it's regarding the pedestrian kind of bicycle safety aspect. Can you speak to that a little bit and also how the project contributes to, you know, the bicycle shared use road that's right there? Is it, are there going to be bike racks? And how does this development contribute to that?
Yeah, I think bike racks is great. I think it's one per, I wrote it here, one bike space per two dwelling units is required. But yeah, I mean, I think that we want to put in as many bike racks as we can. So anyway, one, one bike rack per two units is required. So that's five bike racks. I, I know this is designated as a shared road on the streets that work. And so allowing, though it was kind of, we had quite a bit parking back there, that also helps alleviate some of the street parking, which does help with, with some bicycle and pedestrian use. So that's good. We're extending the sidewalk, I should have mentioned this, we're extending the sidewalk that connects from Habitat to the by right duplexes. So that whole strip of Nassau will now have sidewalks up to the single family detached. So that's very exciting. And I believe this is kind of an unclear area, but when you improve sidewalk, you have to make sure that it's ADA compliant. And with other projects, sometimes they've said the, when you spill out into the roadway, you have to allow somewhere for them to go. So it's kind of at the discretion of the site plan area, whether Florence comes kind of right where the edge of our sidewalk would be. So if they want to crosswalk there, that's kind of whether the city wants that or not, but it might be something that's required at site plan based on ADA regulations. Defer to, I guess, Jack Dawson's on this. But I know that's been required with other projects that have been by right. So I hope that answers it.
Mr. Dawson, can you speak to that?
Um, yeah, I did not review this project. I don't really get involved in the rezonings here, but I'm familiar with all the developments around there. I would, I would have to defer to the traffic engineer for how that applies, especially in by right. Generally, they have to improve the frontage with a sidewalk. And so since this is not a development, they're essentially, I don't want to, I can't put these things in my head. I doubt that we could force them to build a, I'd have to look at the plans. It depends where they, as Nicole was alluding to, it depends where the ramps end up going. You can't build a ramp to nowhere. So we'd have to look at what ramps are existing across the street, how that will work. We have one that's, you go both ways to either ramp on either side or two, you know, or how that would work. And then it is an intersection. So it would require second, yeah. So I mean, if this is a new street, there one hundred percent needs to be a compliant crosswalk at every intersection, but I don't know how it applies in this situation.
Well, and let me, let me just speak to this to back this, this, again, we're planning commission, this is the rezoning, there's no site plan with this. That all, they would have to, to adhere to all site plan regulations. Should they submit, after they got a rezoning, should they choose to submit a site plan?
Thank you. Mr. Leandro, questions for the applicant?
I have none. Thank you.
Ms. Russell, questions for the applicant?
Um, I have a question that popped in my mind as you were showing the site, kind of the, the site plan overview. At the end of your parking lot, it looks like, kind of like, looks like it continues on as if a road would, but I don't know if maybe that's like, yeah, at the end at the, you know, where the trees are, is that just an area for cars to back out? Or is that the idea that that would one day extend in some capacity? Thank you, muted Nicole.
I'm muted. Okay. Yeah, so I, I don't think it would be extended because then it would need to be approved as a street. So it's only, it's a drive by right now. So it can't be extended without more approval. So it, yeah, so these actually, it shows, there's a lot of parking shown here, but these actually might be crossed off for as like turnaround areas. So it might not be as much parking here as it's shown. That's more, I just have, I think we just have to look at the design for that. This could also be extended a little bit for, for better turnaround rather than removing parking spaces. We have like four or five more than we need. But anyway.
While you're on this visual, can you help me understand? Because I'm having trouble reading these topos where you show a retaining wall at the, I guess that's the northern corner, right? So there's a retaining wall, max height eight feet. So what's the, what's the elevation difference between, you know, that point and the, the house next door, the Habitat house next door? Like how much of a, is it, I'm assuming it goes down to that house?
That's a good question. Topo is definitely a, just an expertise, but it's, there's like a kind of a swell. That's, so it's, what happens is there's a stormwater comes out right here. And so you see the stream, it's not. Stormwater comes out right here, and so you see the stream, it's not, it's not like a manmade, or it's not like a natural stream, it's a stormwater. Moving through here, so there's a little bit of a dips down and goes back up. Um, how much difference there is, I don't know that offhand, and I don't think that's shown here.
Okay. Yeah, I was trying to understand if there's a huge, you know, if this is a thirty five foot capped height. Structure, but it's towering over its neighbor, I was on, I was out there today and it doesn't seem like, you know, it seems like the street is relatively. Um, flat, but but that was what I was trying to, that was what I was getting at.
Gotcha, it it drops, it drops off in the back, um, so this, from the street, these won't be like. Above the street, if that may like, um, and there's, there's actually some fill there that has some growth growing on it.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, um, so, yeah, they'll sit on top of that fill, it won't be, which is about at street level. Um, so it's not like they'll be sitting above, um, and this is the max height, so it's not going to be eight feet across the entire portion, it's just as this.
I see, going back, okay, um, thank you, I have no other questions.
Mr. Solzenberg?
Um, thanks, um, and I think just looking at the last chart, the top of the line that goes through the duplex next door is at three twenty. So at the top of retaining walls, three twenty four, I think it's a four foot difference of the dip down now.
No.
Um, but uh.
Rory, if I may just clarify that, because um I know nobody asked, but I do spend all day looking at these plans, so um. I believe that that twenty is an existing contour, because the finished floor was uh twenty eight. For the existing as labeled, and this, and what they've got is three twenty seven, uh twenty seven point five, so they're about the same. Says max eight foot wall, which holds the building up from the street, essentially is what's going on there. And it, but again, none of this is relevant, there's a reason, I think all of this gets worked out later, but that's, you know, the the concept.
Perfect, yeah, that makes sense, actually very helpful, I never knew what FF meant. Um, great, so uh I think, what's the question I actually was going to ask, uh, kind of got covered a little bit, uh, maybe I'll expand on them a little bit. Um, with the playground, um, thanks for that question, Commissioner Habob, um, if it is allowed. Uh, and doesn't have to be totally private, um, I would encourage you uh to potentially make it available to not just the people in in your existing development next door. Um, but also people in the, you know, land trust and and habits at units, if possible as well. Um, I guess that's not really a question, uh. With the uh, the crosswalk situation, um, you know, again, recognizing this is something that gets worked out in site plan review. Um, we did hear many comments complaining about people speeding down the street. Um, and so if there's anything we could do uh with traffic coming there, of like having a bulb out to make that crosswalk with less wide. Um, I guess I was going to ask if that's feasible, but it's probably too early to to say with that too. Um, all right, I'll get into actual question, um, so duplex next door, uh, is that uh for sale or for rent?
For rent.
Um, and what are the rents on those, was it twenty one hundred, like you said?
Twenty one hundred about, they're not finished yet, um, but yeah, twenty one hundred about.
And those are for three bedroom units?
Yes.
Okay, um, and then uh what do you see as the probable market rent for these one and two bedroom units?
Um. Probably around like a little bit less than thirteen hundred. These are probably be around like the one twenty five F M R or lower, and we'd be thrilled with that, that'd be awesome, so these are kind of that. Um. Workforce housing, I guess, between like seventy and hundred AMI. Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, they're really tall, right, they're like five hundred square feet for the one bedroom, so.
Cool, um, and yeah, looking at my chart of that, it looks like you're going down then from something like. Ninety something percent AMI for those three veteran units down to, sorry, you said thirteen, fourteen hundred?
A little bit less than thirteen hundred.
Great, yes, then that would be like seventy ish percent, um. Maybe even a little lower, um, so that's great, uh, to hear, um, and then I want to be really clear on the floodplain stuff. Um, so you mentioned there was a a letter of map revision, um, and it seems there's two things going on here, right? There's the broad area wide letter of map revision from after uh. The Woolen Mills Dam was removed, uh, which lowered the floodplain elevations, where they they publish those charts, what the new elevation is. Uh, and so you guys are saying that the new elevation, the new flood elevation, the one percent floodplain is three twenty four feet. Um, and then separately, you guys are going to fill in the site, uh, so that that blue line on the site plan. Is at three hundred twenty four feet, and that's your Lomar F, is that correct?
Yeah, and Justin already has a Lomar F.
Okay, so that already is there, okay, great, thanks.
Yeah, so he already has the um authority, legality, ability to put fill in that site for that.
Sorry, can we get a definition of what a Lomar F is?
Uh, letter of map revision fill. Um, so that's like your site specific, putting in dirt to change the contours. Um, I went way too deep into this after the last time we talked about this area, clearly, um. All right, uh, and then um, that greenhouse, uh, what are your plans for that? Is that just going to be, you know, a gardening space for residents on site, uh, I know last time we talked about a site down the street, you were talking about selling produce. Um, though obviously retail is not part of the plan, what's the uh, the game plan there?
Um, the intention was for that to be um for the residents to um. Grow what they want to grow and, you know, like a seeding area, um, not for retail.
Gotcha, um, that makes sense, um, and now I would just encourage you, if you, your residents don't have green thumbs and don't want to use it. Uh, reach out to, you know, uh, Paul's Bay Charlottesville, Urban Health, Agriculture Collective, and offer that space up, um, if they'd like it. Um, that's all the questions I have, thanks.
Uh, Mr. Palmer, do you have any questions on this topic?
I don't think that I do, thanks.
Thank you, I I also do not, very clear presentation, uh, counsel, questions for the applicant?
Um, I do have, I guess, uh, two related questions, one is, how many square feet? Per building are you going to have a floor area?
Sixteen eighty.
It it, I'm not, i- is that the footprint, or is that the, if you add up all of the floors?
That's the footprint.
Okay, how many floors then?
Uh, two.
Okay, so we're talking about thirty two hundred s- square feet. Um, you would be allowed by right to have six units on those three parcels. And you're proposing ten units.
Yes.
And each, let's see, thirty two hundred square feet per i- i- is is for. Basically five, five units, is that right?
That's exactly right, yes.
Okay, so you're looking at roughly six to seven hundred square, obviously some are two bedrooms and some are one bedrooms, but.
That's the average.
Yeah, okay, so you're looking at five uh somewhat smaller. I mean, they're they're not, they're not huge apartments, uh, you've got five of them uh in each of two buildings. Whereas you could have, uh, so a total of ten, you could have six. Units of substantially greater size per um, per unit. Um, so in terms of intensity of the use of those three lots, I think, I think we have to sort of keep in mind. That the amount of density that we're adding here. And we're talking about going from six units to ten units, we're not talking about going from six units to thirty units. So, that's okay, that's fine, thank you, that's all I had.
Additional questions?
I have none at this time.
Uh, last uh chance for questions for the applicant.
I just had a really quick question, and I'm sorry if I missed it in the presentation or in the document. Um, just in general, what is considered affordable one bedroom to, like, what are the average one and two bedrooms going for in Charlottesville right now? Currently? Does anyone know? Is that for? I I don't know, I'm I'm just having, I mean, I, uh, looking at the actual footprint of the project doesn't seem that bad. But when we start talking square footage to dollar amount, it just is like, hmm, we have this affordable housing crisis and just. Thirteen hundred dollars for a very small one bedroom apartment does just seem a little expensive.
Mr. Stolzenberg, you're probably over that, Mr. Stolzenberg, you're probably over that.
Yeah, I can, I can send you a spreadsheet that's like, you know, what each percent of AMI can afford. Um, I don't really have anything for like, what's the, you know, like average, like actual on the market prices, though. Um, but I'll send you that.
Thank you.
Mr. Offly, do we have anything on market prices?
I do not, that is not some uh information I have handy.
But I I don't think the objective of this is to improve the affordable housing stock, it's just to improve the housing stocks, correct? In in increase the housing stock.
I understand that, but my objective was always to consider actual affordable housing, whether it is that objective or not. Um, I think that's something that our city is clear that we need, so I think it would be superficial for me not to ask the question.
Yes, ma'am. Totally agree.
Additional questions for the applicant?
And I would agree with you that.
I believe Mr. Stolzenberg has pasted uh affordable rents by AMI in the chat. I believe we are ready for discussion, open it up, who wants to talk?
Do we have public comment before?
Excellent question, yes, we do have public comment, thank you very much. Hello, it is a public hearing, this is wonderful. Uh, if you wish to speak, uh, this is your time, Mr. Trent, can you set us off?
Yes, uh, if you'd like to speak to the commission at this time, please press the raise hand icon in your Zoom webinar, or if you're joining us via telephone. Press star nine, you'll have three minutes to speak. Okay, uh, Kimber Hockey, you are on with the commission, can you hear us?
Yes, hello, how are you? This is the time for the public comment on the Zirnasa.
Yes.
Thank you very much, okay, so, we just, um, you know, we've been through this before in two thousand eighteen. And we're a little dismayed to see the continued push to develop in inappropriate areas. Um, and especially on the Nassau floodplain, and I know there's all this back and forth about percentages, but. The reality is, is that building on the floodplain is bad planning practice, um, as has been wildly written about. And I have sent you more information on that. It's important to note that I I, as far as what I understand is that this project would not be allowed in the county. And that perhaps Charlottesville should adopt their reasoned thinking, and. Hmm, Commissioner Mitchell pointed out something very interesting about the sequestration of carbon, and the reason why I had. Uh, this is an important topic, because it's trees and such that take carbon out of the atmosphere. Um, previously I'd sent to you some information about a Netflix special called Kiss the Ground, as well as reading the not, uh, the book Carbon Drawdown. And as we learned in school, it's trees and green space that pulls carbon out of the air. Um, and we, so we can use the earth to pull all that dirty carbon out of the air. And the best thing to do probably in this area would be more to plant pine trees, those pine trees would not only pull out the carbon and. Make a cleaner air in Charlottesville, but would also absorb a lot of the uh water in that area, which is something that. Actually Napoleon the Third did to create the Bordeaux Forest, um, so we could take a page from his book. I also want to address the racial and economic class injustice issue issues related to climate change and where housing is provided. Um, this is a problematic area, it's, um, as the pictures I sent to you, there's, it's very wet. Um, perhaps this can be mitigated, I'm not convinced of that, but we've seen mold on the Linden Ab apartments. Um, in two thousand eighteen, I sent pictures about that as well. Um, and you know, people of color and low income brackets are pushed into these pub problematic housing areas. And who will suffer when the flooding occurs? Um, the answer is clear, is the residents, and there will be flooding, that's just a matter of time, we've already seen flooding from. In the nineteen seventies and Hurricane Camille, people were riding in boats on Nassau Avenue. And back in two thousand eighteen, we saw major flooding in Charlottesville as well, and I sent you all that, those topics that you can um look at at your leisure. The other thing is that when you build, you push water or put infill, you push that water elsewhere. So upon whom are you pushing it? And a N D S staffer stated that that was an illegal practice, actually, in one of an N D N D S's meetings. And so that needs to be checked upon, because if you're pushing water onto your neighbor, because they're lower or whatever, that's a problem. Um, we're also concerned about the no direct interaction with the neighborhood, as pointed out in the packet. Obviously, people have busy lives and.
So Miss Hockey, your time is currently uh up, if you could, uh, please.
Okay, sure, sure, I just would, I would ask you to please respect the previous denial of this um type of plan. And to vote no to uh increasing the density on the flood zone, thank you very much.
Thank you, and next place?
Uh, Jason Halbert, you are on with the commission, can you hear us?
Yeah, hi, thank you, uh, Jason Halbert, two six three three Jefferson Park Circle. Um, I and friends of mine led the charge to remove the Woolen Mills Dam in two thousand seven. Um, the historical floodway was changed, we provided hydrology studies to the city. And others to help change the FEMA maps, um, while there is obviously still possible to flood there. Cause it's down by the river, um, I think the removal of the dam um will help mitigate some of that. The ninety seven flood Hurricane Fran was, that site was underwater, I walked it. Um, I think if you build it up a little bit, and with the mitigation from the dam removal, you should be good to go. It's not to say that they won't have water in their yard if there's a bad hurricane, but um, we need the housing, do it, thank you.
And thank you, and next please?
There are currently no more hands raised.
Last call, if you want to speak on this topic, now is your time. All right, thank you all, we uh closed this public hearing, or not the public hearing, closed the public comment, there we are. We are now ready for discussion, uh, who wants to start us off?
Uh, sorry, just one more question of the applicant that I didn't.
Please.
Form, um, so uh, I know when you build in the floodplain without removing yourself from it. Uh, you're required to have at least one foot of free board, uh, so like the base uh level of your finished. Like per floor, uh, is at least one foot above the base flood elevation. Um, since you're removing yourself from the floodplain, so that the building won't be in the floodplain after the fill. Uh, would you still have uh some amount of free board, like above the floodplain when these are built? Uh, recognizing this isn't, you know, obviously you're not getting a building permit right now.
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Yeah, um, I don't know if Justin is on this call, he was at one point, um, he may know. Um, but I I I don't know the answer to that.
Additional discussion?
I'd like to um, maybe kick off a conversation, um, picking up from where Commissioner Dow left off. Um, and that is, uh, you know, it's sort of like, I'll preface it with two things, we, this, this proposal is in front of us tonight. And so we will re- review it based on the existing zoning ordinance, but I think what's interesting that we can. Kind of. Um. Mull, mull around a little bit, is that this, this proposal is in what is designated a future sensitive area. Where our objectives are to limit displacement, to increase affordable housing, and um. You know, limit, limit gentrification in 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 however we wanted to find that. So I I just think this is an interesting, um, we're kind of talking around this, talking around what's the affordability. Um, but there's, there's uh. You know, some reservations and some pushback from, from the. Um. From members of the public and. Um. I I don't know, I I just think that this, we could talk about what we want out of our sense of community, sensitive community designation. In using this as an example, um, of, you know, how would this be different? In a a a future review, I don't know if that's helpful or not, but I I think it's relevant.
Anyone want to pick up that football?
Um, I, I think it's probable. Yeah, I, I think it's important that we have the conversation, but but, but I think we ought to focus on the application in front of us, but not ignoring the suggestion, she's right, we, we've got to have this conversation. We have to resolve this application, in my own opinion.
So I, I can give us a stab at it with regard to the actual application. Sorry, if you weren't done, go ahead.
Oh, please, you, you're probably going to say something with a greater wisdom than I would, please.
So, um, so it's, it's me, you know, the big goals of sensitive areas is, uh, you know, objective number one, the most important is to, uh, to stop displacement, right? So existing residents aren't getting pushed out of their homes, so we're not tearing down affordable homes to build new homes. Um, you know, another goal I think is to, uh, maybe, uh, sort of help ensure or, or encourage any new development, um, to not be wildly out of line, uh, with, with kind of existing, uh, socioeconomic conditions, um, right now. And so an example would be, for example, like the new, the vacant lot down the block, um, that got redirected into that blue home on stilts. Uh, that's something like a 60th percentile house in the city, um, which is, you know, significantly more expensive than the areas around here. Um, and so to me, it seems like the buy right use, uh, when I plug into my little spreadsheet here, um, it's going to be three bedroom apartments, affordable to families of four, that are at 94% of the median income. Um, and you know, actually, you know, in a sense, that's like not totally terrible. Um, it's, you know, affordable to people under, you know, on, in the bottom half, just very barely in the bottom half of the income spectrum. Um, but we have the opportunity, um, by allowing more smaller units, um, to get it affordable to families of three uh, at 66% of area median income. Um, and, uh, actually at that level, it's right around the mark, uh, where you could also apply, uh, a federal housing choice voucher. And then, uh, be able to reach even lower, uh, levels, um, you know, 30% of AMI or below, uh, by adding federal subsidies. Um, so to me, uh, that change, um, by having less expensive units affordable to people with lower incomes, um, seems like a positive one and in line with what I see as our goals for, uh, sensitive areas.
Additional thoughts?
The, um, the only objection I would have had, had was, uh, the floodplain issue, and I think, uh, staff has made me pretty comfortable. The question, um, is Russell asked, and the, the way they answered them, I'm pretty comfortable with it, so I'm, I'm okay with this.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I agree also. Um, I was just gonna say that they proffer, you know, by proffering the height to they sure that it kind of fits into the neighborhood. Um, and, um, the building's not in the floodplain, so it's not an issue for me either.
Was Russell?
I'd like to, um, move to recommend approval of this application to rezone from R2 to R3 on the basis that the proposal would service the, serve the interest of the general public and good zoning practice.
Second.
Additional discussion on this topic? So, Henry?
Nothing, no.
Thank you. Uh, hearing none.
Look to see if I had my hand raised. I, I don't this time.
You looked very dramatic, like you were, you were preparing to say.
Getting ready for a vote.
Speaking of, uh, Ms. Chrissy, what do you call the role list?
Sure, I'm gonna go based on screen in order from before. Oh. Yes. And I forgot Mr. Habab before, so I'm gonna add him in.
He chimed in again.
Yes. All right, Mr. Habab. All right, Mr. Mitchell?
Hi.
Mr. Lahindra?
Hi.
Ms. Russell?
Hi.
Mr. Stoltenberg?
Hi.
Ms. Dow?
I'm sorry, you're on mute.
Uh, you're on mute.
I with the encouragement of maybe a couple of more affordable units.
All right, and Mr. Soli Yates?
Hi. I believe that passes. How are we feeling? Do we want a short break? Are we ready to, actually, first, um, closing the public hearing. Thank you all. Counsel, you're welcome to stick with us or have a nice relaxing evening. That would be okay also. Uh, do we want a short break? How are we feeling?
We can do a short break now, or I can just leave.
Short break now, am I here? Five minutes? Sounds good. See you in five.
What else we have?
I think we are back ish. Mr. Trail, is my timing roughly accurate? How close am I?
Is, yes.
Hooray, we are at five. Welcome back all. We only have one thing to talk about. How wonderful. I believe that item is 240 Stripling Avenue. Who do we have to speak on this?
Sure, that'll be not myself, Matt Alphley, City Planner, Neighborhood Development Services.
Welcome stranger, please do so.
On September fourteenth, Planning Commission held a public hearing for the requested rezoning application. The application was seeking to rezone the subject property from R1A, single family, small lot, and R2 residential two-family to PUD, Planned Need Development, with a development plan in proffered. The applicant was also seeking recommendation on the critical slope waiver at that meeting. Both applications are needed for the proposed development. Detailed information on key elements of the plan you discussed on fourteenth can be found in the staff report from the fourteenth or the update memo in front of you tonight. During the planning, during the public hearing, Planning Commission heard from sixteen members of the public. Most speakers raised concern about the safety of Stripling Avenue and how additional dwelling units in the subject property would be detrimental to public safety. Other speakers were in favor of the development, would like to see more affordable dwelling units in the city and felt this development would provide that. If Stripling Avenue was improved and had sheltered sidewalks, most residents in the area would be in favor or less opposed to the development. During Planning Commission's discussion, density, affordable housing, street trees, and proposed sidewalks in Stripling were all discussion points. Most commissioners liked the development and the affordable aspects that it would provide, but did not feel the proposed agreement between the developer and the city was detailed enough to make a recommendation. Planning Commission and City Council did not have enough information to know the city would be able to cover any gaps in funding for the improvements to Stripling Avenue. There was disagreement between what the developer felt it would cost and what the city engineer believed the estimate should be. To address these issues, some of the planning commissioners, to address these issues from some of the planning commissioners and staff, the applicant request was granted a deferral. In that time, the applicant made minor modifications to the application. For you tonight is basically the same as what you were reviewing on September fourteenth with the following changes. No changes to the critical slope. Within the rezoning application, the applicant updated the setback requirements as found on page four. The original application called for a minimum building setback front, side, and rear of zero and adjacent to properties five feet. The new setbacks being required are a minimum front, side, rear of zero and adjacent to an adjacent to outside properties of five feet, but a maximum for ten feet. This would create a build-two zone within the development. So the original development setbacks, you had zero, but you go far, as far back as you want. The new proposal is you could go zero, but you could only go a maximum of ten feet back. These setbacks exclude any frontage on Stripling Avenue. The applicant also updated the phasing to the plan to reflect the requirements of open spaces, open space requirements. There was no information provided in the original application. In the new application, a minimum of one acre of open space shall be dedicated in phase one. At least twenty percent total open space shall be provided with each phase thereafter. Planning Commission closed their public hearing on September fourteen and no new public hearings needed tonight. Planning Commission can continue the discussion from the fourteen and make recommendations to City Council. This concludes my report and staff is available to answer questions. It should also be noted that the applicant has prepared a new presentation should Planning Commission wish to open the discussion back up to and give him that opportunity.
Mr. Mitchell? You're currently muted.
Thank you, Mr. Sillies. I'd love to see the applicant's presentation, but I'd also like to know what progress has been made. We pushed back because we wanted the applicant to work with Public Works to figure a way to coordinate the sidewalks, the improvement of streetscape and things like that. What's happened and not a question that the applicant answered now, but in the presentation or maybe when we met, respond like what's going on with Public Works in Charlie? Is this guys, this whole deal?
Commissioner, when you, when you say Public Works, are you referencing there was a discussion about trying to widen sidewalks around the trees directly in front of the property or?
So it was the whole sidewalk issue, yes.
The sidewalks on Stripling, I will, I'll defer on that for a moment, but the sidewalks directly in front of the property, the applicant did look at that. Due to where the trees are and the actual width of Stripling, there's no way to preserve the trees directly in front of the subject property. Even with doing a innovative sidewalks around the trees, you're still going to lose those trees directly up on Stripling.
Mr. Dawson, could you speak to estimates?
Sure, I did a presentation to council and I provided essentially what was over-under, which I said it was over that, and I don't remember what, I think it was 2.8 or 2.9 or something like that with a twenty percent contingency. That was not, again, as I stated, the council, it's not a complete estimate, it's just an improved upon estimate, but it is likely to be higher than that, would be my guess. So I I did that exercise and I did provide that information to council and that, other than the pre-meeting, I'm not sure what happened with that. So there's your question.
I believe so, thank you. Additional questions for staff? Please.
Once again, my question comes back to when will we be able to improve the infrastructure in the area relative to the building of relative to move this development along? The objection we had, I think, was that we didn't have a way to make them work together. And has the developer and staff been able to talk through that? I do understand that we have a capital improvement backlog that needs to be addressed. Considering that, when does the backlog catch up with the work that needs to be done on the infrastructure at 240 Stripling Avenue? To make this development work and be safe for the residents who live there? Just, just so Charlie, when Charlie begins to speak, he can, he knows what the things we're worried about.
Do we have someone on staff who can speak to CIP matters?
But just to touch on what Lisa mentioned earlier, I don't believe it's reflected in the current CIP. So we can't do projects that aren't on the current CIP without money. So yeah, we try not to initiate projects without funds. So I can't speak to when that would be. I'm not in the loop on the most up-to-date information.
Okay, my objective in asking those questions is to remind us of the counsel we get from Ms. Robertson as to when we get to a motion and how we can couch it so that we protect the infrastructure. But move this law.
Additional questions for staff?
I guess I have one kind of more technical question for staff on the staff concern number four about the, the kind of dead-end service roads to service the garages for the townhomes. I'm trying to understand, I guess, like why they don't qualify as an alley? Is it because they're too wide? Or is it because they're dead-end? Or is it because we, they could be private roads rather than an alley? And you know, whether there's anything that could have been changed in this plan to mitigate that or whether that's just kind of a fundamental problem with, you know, the layout, the general like, you know, conceptual layout of the site.
So to answer that, there are alleys have a very specific meaning in our code. And alleys should connect, they should not be dead-end. And so they function as an alley, but they're not alleys as you, as we would define them when we are looking for discretionary rezoning and trying to further along some of the goals that are accomplishing. Staff's not trying to say these aren't acceptable in these formations, that they're not, they don't serve the purpose of backloading the homes, but they're not, they're not alleys, they are, they are shared driveways to, and the lots are actually flaglots because of that and because of how water needs to be provided to them. So it's more a function of they serve a purpose, but they do not serve the purpose of what is called an alley in our code.
Gotcha. And then my quick follow-up would be like, if, if they were extendable, as in if the adjacent property owners wanted to extend them and there were some agreement to allow them, would that make it a non-dead-end alley and therefore make it an acceptable alley?
Um. If they extended it in the future, I mean, we would still, without seeing a future plan, still, you know, still connect to the other property, still be until they actually dump back out into a city-maintained road. I don't see how they would not be dead-in quote-unquote alleys. Again, the staff feels a function for what they need to function, they're not bad in providing that rear-loading, but when we talk about connectivity in a road and alley and pedestrian system, we're talking about connecting to other public infrastructure.
Gotcha, that makes sense, thank you.
Additional questions for staff? Mr. Armstrong, please catch us up.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here again. Mr. Trail, would you like to put the presentation up or should I share screen?
I will give you the ability to share a screen. Okay.
Okay, you all should have this now. We are back in the familiar territory of 240 Stripling here. So this is a rehash of the community engagement that this project has been through so far, beginning in August of 2019. All of this is familiar from our last meeting, except for the bold point where was the last meeting, we deferred to primarily to address the discrepancies about the sidewalk cost and refine how developer and city participated in that together. So the changes in the plans that we made since the last meeting in September were in response to some commission comments we heard in that meeting and some ideas that we hadn't thought of. So thank you for that. First is we revised the setbacks, as Mr. Alphley mentioned earlier. That eliminates potential utility conflict. It's sort of a technical issue. The next is we revised the phasing plan to clarify that open space will happen with each phase and went a step further to say that at least one acre of open space will happen with the first phase. At no times will it be less than twenty-five percent of whatever portion of development is happening. We also clarified the treatment of the tree preservation areas, made those easier to see and added specification for a native wildflower mix in areas that cannot have trees, for example, areas where there's an existing sewer line. Those can have a native mix, a ground cover, but can't have trees. We added a few more trees and common areas internal to the development. And we did look into preserving those beach trees with our engineer, the city traffic engineer and the city utility engineer. And it just comes down to it's not good overall practice to do so. As it is, the roots are right on the edge of existing pavement on a road that's not wide enough per current city standards. And though they are pretty trees, they, they just can't be saved with good engineering practice or with any widening of Stripling or adding sidewalk, but we looked into that very thoroughly. They're also not listed as a good street tree in the master tree list. I don't know the reasons for that, but I assume it has to do with, with roots. And the big one is that we increased the amount of funding we're offering in the separate performance agreement that goes to council. Not specifically to Planning Commission for action, but increased that to the $2.9 million total. The city's engineers' over-under estimate was 2.873. And so though we feel that this work can be completed for significantly less, hence our previous amount proposed. We do think it's important enough that we want to make sure that our amount judged with city engineering estimate over-under. To touch on the question about the process with Public Works on this for Mr. Mitchell. I got an email, I think at eleven thirty PM, the night of the last planning commission from city officials to engage in in discussions about this. So there were immediate and substantial conversations and then city engineering shared with us their estimates and we had a meeting with our engineers and the city engineers and other officials to have some back and forth about where those numbers came from on either side, you know, where our numbers came from, where their numbers came from. And I'm not sure we necessarily agree on the estimates, but but we're trying to make that disagreement on the estimate irrelevant with this increased funding number proposal. We want to get those sidewalks built. We want to provide the funding so that it could be put into the CIP. Whenever you'll do that, if that's a necessary step, those funds will be there and the timing of them is that we'd like for this to happen to me. We've already done a lot of the preliminary surveying. I'm sure that some more will need to be done to pick up other items, but we've surveyed the entire quarter. We've done a preliminary layout for sidewalks and drainage and now Mr. Dawson has also done a preliminary layout for, for the city's own due diligence on that. There's some differences, but I think we have a pretty good idea of a, of a basic what would need to happen. There's a lot of details in the detail engineering that will come later. But our funds will be ready for the construction to be paid for before we are allowed to file for a land disturbance permit for our site. So that gives you idea of the timing. And my slides are not coming through. The city had their technical difficulties and now I'm having mine. So if you'll bear with me, there's something important I want to show, but I can pull it another way.
Take it down.
Sorry about that. Or at least I hope I can pull it up.
Nice day today.
Okay. Trying. All right. So I want to talk about that money because it's, it's kind of nebulous to think about in terms of words, but when you look at an image, it becomes very clear what this means. We are offering funds upfront to pay for this. And then the way that the cash flow works is our development obviously significantly increases the value of the real estate at 240 Stripling. So the taxes go up. And we're not just talking about they go up a little bit, they go up a lot. We're going from a tax of about $9,800 per year right now on the vacant land as it sits to an eventual tax of over $700,000 per year. Those are the receipts to the city, looking out in a twenty-year horizon. So the city always receives and keeps all of the tax that's shown in orange on this bar chart. The blue is what is allocated to pay for the sidewalks. And under this illustration, which I believe is a conservative estimate of the state tax rate, inflation and the actual value of the 170 new homes that would be built. The sidewalks are paid for in just over six years. And then every dollar after that is tax receipts to the city that is unallocated, that goes into the general fund and can be used for other priorities of the city. So this just gives you an idea of how that cash flow pays for the sidewalks and other future things for the city without any without any existing money having to come out of the city's coffers or CIP. And this slide is the keynote of those dollars, starting in year zero and going all the way through when the sidewalks are fully paid for. And then, of course, it raises upward from there. In twenty years, this produces conservatively eight and a half million dollars of new tax revenue after paying for the sidewalks. And this is just a reminder of context for the site. You see UVA's Fontaine Research Park there in the background, Department of Forestry, top left. Apartments in Almeral County across Morse Creek to the south and Hauntley neighborhood to the east there on the right side of your screen with our proposed project in the middle. And an idea of what it would look like, the open spaces, this is looking from the Central Park down toward Morse Creek through a linear park. And this is a view from that, of that same Central Park area from one side. And this is a typical example of the muse environment that's created. Notice what you don't see here is those alleys or technically private roads as they're known. What you see is the fronts of houses fronting on greens and pedestrian areas with the vehicle access really relegated to a secondary status once you enter this new community. And of course, affordable housing. We are pledging in the proffers about twenty-five units of new affordable housing at sixty percent AMI or less with a requirement that at least thirty percent of those be rental and at least thirty percent of those be for sale for homeownership and the remaining forty percent to be at our discretion, whether they're rental or for sale. That is all I have. And I look forward to your questions.
Questions for the applicant?
A quick question. How long is the construction expected to last? I know you have a number of phases for this project. Can you give us an idea of, of the?
Of course. If you remember, the first bar chart I showed you, it kind of showed a ramp up of those real estate tax revenues that anticipated approximately a five-year build-out for the project. Obviously, that's dependent on certain market conditions. It could go faster, it could go slower, but that's what we expect.
More questions?
Please.
All right, I'll be quick. Another question on timing. I think someone said in the pre-meeting that you were hoping or expecting to break ground in the upcoming fiscal year. So that would be July 2022 to June 2023, which obviously you would have to put the money available to the city by then, but they have to do all their, their planning and, you know, laying out the route and engineering, et cetera, to start on the sidewalks. In your experience, is that really the timeframe where you would be looking at actually like getting everything together to get approvals from the city to do land disturbance and to get your first building permits and all that? Like, when, when do you realistically think that you would break ground under realistic conditions? And then side note slash follow-up question, what's the status of Flint Hill? And when did we approve that?
Oh, boy. Maybe I should tackle the Flint Hill question first. We are still working through approvals on Flint Hill site plans. I don't remember exactly when the Flint Hill PUD was approved, but I bet I could find out while we're here on this call. Actually, I just looked it up. August of 2020, so a year and a quarter ago. I think we probably still have nine months of likely approval process to go at Flint Hill before we can break ground. There are some technical issues there that we're trying to work through, but it's, it's not easy. For Stripling, I think that yes, it's possible to break ground in the next fiscal year, which, as you say, goes through the middle of 2023. But it's also, I'll use Mr. Dawson's term, over-under. We could be over. That's certainly a goal of ours. We want, we want to get these built and habitable as quickly as we can. But that's probably a good over-under is right at the end of that fiscal year.
Additional questions?
I would, the love church projections, those church projections are based on current, current market conditions. We have no idea what the market's going to look like a year from now, but still, I'm cool with it. I still think that we should, as we deliberate this, walk back to the advice of council and when we begin thinking about making a motion, tie any approval that we make to the allocation and moving up of the the CIP plans to support this. This is a comment, not a question.
Questions for Mr. Armstrong?
Are we asking questions about the critical slopes as well? Or are we just on the rezoning?
The whole package.
Mr. Armstrong, have you seen the recommended conditions from staff? There's about eight?
I have, and we didn't see those until they were in the staff report from the last meeting. I think they are technically feasible, but there may be some challenges in those. I'm not sure of the benefit of some of them either.
Here to be more specific on that?
So, yes.
Don't have all of my engineers' thoughts in front of me, but some of them are very general, like super silt fence everywhere that silt fence would be specified. If that's at the bottom of a hill or an area that receives a lot of water, I wholeheartedly agree with that recommendation. It's something we often do anyway, even when it's not required on a site plan. But if it's an area that is more or less flat or gently sloped or doesn't receive a lot of water, things like that don't have a lot of benefit. That's not a deal breaker for us, but what I think might be helpful, and if you are willing to put in your motion is to allow some discretion of the city engineer once we actually present a plan that, that shows these measures so that it's not so black and white that they're absolutely required, even if they're not appropriate as determined by the city engineer at the time of plans. Is that helpful? at the time of plans. Is that helpful?
Mr. Dawson, can you comment on that idea?
Sure. Again, a lot of this goes to this thing way early in the process. If we had a resümation control plan, then we could make specific version. I understand Mr. Armstrong's concern about where it might not be necessary, but this is a big project. One of the you know, we have a lot of conversations in here about how this stuff gets executed, but this is going to be a long. You know, I don't know. You talk about when it's going to start. It's going to be a long project. We have one inspector. Depending on how you count them, two inspectors in the city now to police all of these projects. Then, you know, we apply enough discretion trying to make sure moving forms based on all the different engineering pieces of these things. So I don't mind that. I don't. This isn't much. So we, so it has perimeter silt fence in here. I just had to bring it up. So perimeter silt fence is at the bottom of the slopes generally because this whole thing is on a hill. If it's the perimeter, the whole, there's some intention in that. It's not just words that we put down here. So I think we should stay with perimeter silt fence. That's, you know, whoever the contractor is on that day, if it's about to rain and it's four o'clock, they don't have to worry about retrenching and all the silt they have wired back silt fences. So my staff, I don't have to get personally involved in shepherding this project through, you know, successful roach control measures. So that I think that I think that's pretty specific enough.
I'm pretty happy with supporting staff recommendations for the steep slope.
Any additional questions for Mr. Armstrong?
Sorry, if I could follow up with Mr. Dawson there. I mean, what you said about silt fence makes sense to me. Would, are you okay with the idea of a clause that says that you can have the discretion to change these?
There's already discretion in there because I'm the one that gets to determine what perimeter means. So to me, as someone who reviews tons of these plans, has designed many plans, it's pretty clear. So to their engineer, it should be pretty clear. I don't, you know, in this situation, there's twenty feet of silt fence somewhere. And we have some argument about whether that's perimeter. I mean, who, it seems trivial to me at this point. So that that's the purpose with perimeter silt fence.
Well, that's your call. I mean, you make that call. You do. You make that call. So I'm pretty cool with, again, Mr. Dawson's, he makes a call.
Yeah, that seems fine to me.
Additional questions for Mr. Armstrong? I believe we are ready for discussion. Who wants to kick off discussion?
I wonder if Ms. Robertson would be kind enough, because I think we're at the point where we're ready to make a motion. If she would be kind enough, kind enough to remind us of what an appropriate motion would be that protects the things that we want to protect. Because she reminded us of that earlier.
Or Ms. Russell could make a motion, which I have seen and think is entirely appropriate.
Well, Liz.
Ms. Russell?
Sure. I have a motion for the rezoning that, subject to sidewalk improvements on Stribling Avenue being prioritized appropriately in the city capital improvement program, I move to recommend that city council should approve ZM twenty zero 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 two where there is on the basis that the streets proposed within the PUD development are laid out in a manner substantive. Do I have to read all this or is it just as in the staff report?
Ms. Russell, Mr. Chair, I would second Ms. Russell's motion.
I hear a second. Additional discussion on this topic?
Should we, this is the part where we talk with Lisa about it or?
I think the motion you made was already approved by our chief legal officer.
I think the motion makes it clear that you're recommending approval subject to the sidewalk project being included in the CIP so that I can go forward along with the development.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa.
Additional discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to say something real quick. I mean, I know like the funding for the sidewalks and whether they happen or not, it is kind of outside the scope of this. I think that's appropriate for tonight's meeting, but that said, we're probably going to revisit it in two weeks when we start talking about the CIP and then again next month. So I think like those charts really made clear like what the trade off is here. What I was trying to express in my email earlier, but probably should have used a visual instead, like beyond the incremental revenue from this, being able to fund these sidewalks that the neighborhood has been asking for since before I lived there and I moved there in twenty thirteen and for years before. And then on top of that, there could be enough revenue to support in in bondable capacity or like debt service after those are paid off to pay for a whole one seventh of the school reconfiguration. And then on top of that, we're getting a project with a good urban form that we've asked for with grids. Everything I've gleaned from all the architects and landscape architects and whatever on the place commission all these years. I think it's it's a good project. It provides a lot of housing, both housing that we need for the market to absorb some of this inrush of demand and a ton of affordable units, twenty six units for families that will have somewhere to live now. And I think council, when they, when they look at this, and they're probably not listening to us right now, but they really need to think long and hard about whether it's worth making this investment that doesn't actually require any upfront funds or foregoing all of that revenue and all that housing and just leaving this as a vacant parcel of land or locking it into some low density use for a long time that disturbs the slopes anyway, but then doesn't give us very much tax revenue. To me, it's a positive win win.
Mr. Mitchell?
Mr. Stolzenberg makes a lot of great points. Points that are points that need to be discussed at another time when we get into the capital budget because I would like to move forward the vote, Mr. Chair.
Any more discussion on this topic? Ms. Chrissy, will you please call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Habba?
Hi.
Mr. Mitchell?
Hey.
Mr. Hendra?
Hi.
Ms. Russell?
Hi.
Mr. Stolzenberg?
Hi.
Ms. Dow?
Hi.
And Mr. Soli Yates?
Hi. I believe that passes. Any issues that we'd like to discuss before adjourning?
Do we have?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mitchell?
We have a steep slope, a critical slope waiver to vote on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we need to make the motion as well?
Yeah. Oh, yes.
Very good. Thank you. This is important to note these things. Any discussion on that topic?
Give me a second to look at the staff recommendation. I think I was.
The issue I heard from staff is staffing, right, is 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 not related, again, I'm sorry, not related to what we have in front of us, but we're hearing loud and clear that you know, it's one thing to improve, approve and and require conditions, but if we don't have the staff that can go and and monitor. You know, we're not, we're doing our community a disservice, the neighbors. So I mean, I am looking to the developer Charlie, to Mr. Armstrong and saying, you know, if we ask that you work with our city staff to make their jobs easy, so it's easier, you know, and do the things that the plan says it is going to do so that these things can go seamlessly.
And the good news is you've got Cena and Lloyd, Michael and Sam listening in. So they know that we need more resources to make this stuff enforceable. So I would ask leaders to heed your words. I'm sorry, please, please.
Go ahead, Mitchell.
Were you about to make a motion? Because if you were, I'll defer to you.
I was about to make a motion.
Please make that motion.
I was making a motion to recommend approval of the critical slope waiver with recommended conditions from staff as presented in the in the staff report.
So that would be recommendations from one through eight on page eleven. I second that.
Discussion on this topic? Ms. Chrissy, will you please call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Habba?
Hi.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Lahendra?
Hi.
Ms. Russell?
Hi.
Mr. Stolzenberg?
Hi.
Ms. Dow?
Hi.
And Mr. Soli Yates?
Hi. Thank you. I believe this agenda is now resolved. Do we have any additional topics we want to discuss before we roll out? I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'll move to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
All in favor, please give me a thumbs up. I'll take it. Have a good night, all. Thank you.